Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors Regular Session Meeting for Thursday, December nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Reminder that a recording device will be used during this meeting, and we're going to start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm going to open it up for public comment for non-agenda items, and on Rules of Conduct for Public Meeting established by Resolution two thousand and one oh eight, the time allotted to each individual making a public comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. So again, I'm going to open it up for public comment for non-agenda items.
My only comment is Jay, thank you for your.
I'm very sorry if I could interrupt and ask you to use the microphone.
Mike Wagner, Jeffress Road. Jay, thank you for all of your help in the community. We appreciate all the time and energy you had, and I appreciate working with you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the minutes of the previous meeting, Board of Supervisors, November nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
I think there's a, there's one correction. It says in there that I had said that I did not receive the agreements. I received the agreements for the Carliana Development on Monday for the meeting, and it says in there thirty days instead of three, so I think that should be corrected.
Say that again. Where are we?
For the page. It's not, they're not in part here. It goes page three. It's not ordered.
All right, well, we'll, um, it's hard to say where to strike it from, but we'll use the minute meetings from the video as our, as our approval of minutes.
Are you, we're looking at the November nineteenth minutes?
Correct.
I'll make a motion that they be approved as submitted.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, uh, December fifth, two thousand and nineteen.
I'm sorry, that's what I'm talking about.
Motion that they be approved as submitted?
I just said I'd like to correct them, Jay.
The date? I'm missing pages anyway.
Comes from one to three. There's no page two.
Yeah, I read mine online, so, okay. So, um, so we'll just confirm that, but we'll note that you had a correction for three days versus thirty days, correct?
Correct, and then Jay had said thirty days as well, so that should be corrected to be three.
All right, and again, we'll use the videotape as our record on that, so all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Planning Commission, November sixth, two thousand and nineteen.
Motion to approve is submitted.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
And then the Planning Commission, December fourth, two thousand and nineteen.
I didn't even see. We don't have those.
I don't think we have those.
All right, so we'll hold on to December fourth. Okay, Treasurers' Report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I am greatly relieved to be relieved of my duty as interim secretary, however, I remain the interim treasurer. I'd like to welcome Lisa, the latest to the, to the, to the panel, and I'm very happy to have some additional help here in the township. The fund balances for this evening are as follows. In the general fund, the balance is nine hundred and seventy-two thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and eighty cents. The balance in the traffic impact fee fund is one million, six hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-one cents. The balance in the open space referendum fund is two million, three hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-six cents. The balance in the open space, that is, the developer fee in lieu of fund, is seven hundred reports, both the deposit and the general fund activity, are November first to date, and eleven thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and three cents. so therefore may include items that you previously approved, but I feel like that The sum of the four individually earmarked sections of the capital projects fund is date range, since it includes the period that has been reconciled, is perhaps a better six hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars and fourteen cents, date range. So if you feel like you've seen some things before, it's because you have. and the state liquid fuel fund balance is one hundred and eighty-one thousand, twenty-six
Thank you. You guys okay?
dollars and sixty-four cents. And that is all.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
We approve the disbursements as requested.
Thank you. Let's take a minute to make sure that the finances are in order. I'll second. And I will abstain from check number twenty-five, six twenty-eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now I'm going to turn it over to Scott for the Township Manager's Report.
Thank you. Many of you may have come upon Dave Kirkner over as many years as of service to this township and the community. Dave served us initially as representative of the East Brandywine Youth Athletics. He was also our appointed accountant or auditor for several years. He served two terms as a supervisor with the Board of Supervisors. He was an original member of our Brandywine Regional Police Commission and also a founding member of the East Brandywine Foundation. As I said, he's been involved in many things in this community over the years and other activities, I'm sure, around the community, Downingtown and other areas. It's a very sad day for the East Brandywine community. Unfortunately, Dave passed away this morning, early this morning, at home. I hope that you'll join me in keeping his wife, Pat, and his children in your thoughts and prayers over the next several days. I wanted to provide a further update on the paving on Ballinger Road and Horseshoe Pike. The widening has been done along the south side of Horseshoe Pike and the paving of Ballinger Road, the intersection of Ballinger Road and along Horseshoe Pike, has been completed on a temporary basis. Alan Myers completed that paving prior to Thanksgiving and reopened Ballinger Road to three twenty-two. This week, a subcontractor from Pico has been installing a natural gas pipeline through the new McAdam that was just installed on Ballinger Road and crossed Horseshoe Pike, I believe, yesterday. There was some traffic, there were some traffic restrictions on Ballinger Road through the week and yesterday while crossing Horseshoe Pike. I spoke to our township engineer today. They're proposing to start installation of the traffic signal poles and mast arms early in January of two thousand and twenty. If they do install the traffic signals, they will not be activated until the rest of the paving on the north side and the other paving of Ballinger Road and Horseshoe Pike is completed, which would be in the spring of two thousand and twenty. And now I'm going to move forward because I have a special announcement, sort of on the lines of what Mike Wagner said, but Jay, if you would join me. For those of people who don't know, Jay has served the township for some twenty-seven years, first as a member of the Planning Commission, and then the last twenty years as a member of the Board of Supervisors. He's also been on several committees, and he's been, I would say, for me, he's been a great mentor in knowledge and planning, and law has been a great help. And I'm pleased that we were able to get from the State Association of Township Supervisors sort of the kind of service presented to Jay through Fisher Esquire, the Brandywine Township of Chester County, and recognition of your twenty years of service as a township supervisor. We thank you for yourself, your dedication to the community and local government, and your leadership, commitment, and passion for serving your fellow citizens. I'm going to give it to David M. Sangue, Executive Director, Special War Department President. I would just say that, for me, it was an honor to serve the community, and I always felt like it was a great honor for me to be chosen, reelected multiple times, and given the opportunity to do what I could. But thank you all very much. And finally, on behalf of the supervisors, township and police staff, we wish you all a very Merry Christmas and a safe and joyous two thousand and twenty. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just wanted to say about Dave Kirkner, that, as many of you know, Dave was a CPA, an accountant, and he provided countless hours to the township. He was in here helping Mary Beth when she was the treasurer all the time. I think he was instrumental in getting the Budget Committee started and was one of the initial members of the Budget Committee, but David, Dave was always a great colleague on the Board of Supervisors and always willing to step up and help the township whenever he could, and he'll be sorely missed.
Thank you, gentlemen. Turn it over to Township Assistant Manager for his report.
Thank you again. As is my usual tradition, I'm going to summarize the events that are hosted in the township between now and your next regular meeting. There is one. It is the winter solstice at the Bonsville Mill. The Bonsville Mill Committee has partnered with the Downingtown Area Library to host, celebrate the winter solstice from four to six p.m. on Saturday, December twenty-first. Everyone is invited to embrace the darkest day of the year with traditions, food, fun, and, well, food and fun in the park. And I actually should, should say that this is a bit of an invitation. Reservations were required, and I am pleased to announce that, that all of the event is fully booked, so I want to note for the record we're going to have the event, but it is booked. Second update this evening. Staff will begin using the new cloud-based software Tracer on Monday, January third. This new software functions as both a G I S asset management tool and a workflow management tool for our permits tracking. I'd like to recognize our township building permits team, specifically Noran King and Lisa Tarashi, for their many hours invested in tailoring this off-the-shelf product for the anticipated rollout. I'm confident that this software, although there may be some initial bumps in the first quarter, a rollout of any new software, I think it will make our operations much more efficient and provide better service to the residents. Staff is now fully prepared for the transition to A.J. Blazinski as the solid waste hauler for two thousand and twenty. A curbside collection and a curbside collection of trash and recycling will be on Tuesday, beginning on December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. A complete schedule of the collection dates for two thousand and twenty, including the curbside trash recycle, yard waste, and bulk days, as well as the four planned leaf vacuuming weeks, can be found on the reverse of your report, and I believe there are some in the back of the room for, for anyone who's interested to take one and pin it on your refrigerator. The single-stream recyclables will be diverted to J.P. Mascaro's facility's recovery facility, or MRF, on December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen as well. While our joining of the Chester County Processing and Marketing Agreement has been delayed, J.Mascaro, J.P. Mascaro has generously agreed to honor the recycling tipping fee as bid by this multi-municipal consortium. The board should expect staff and the solicitor to recommend adoption of an ordinance formally entering into this multi-municipal agreement in early two thousand and twenty. And then lastly, some, some good news this evening. The township has been awarded a Act One Oh One Recycle Program grant in the amount of thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. This is for the update of our recycle ordinance and the reimbursement for already purchased additional recycle toters for the newly constructed housing units in our community. The toters were purchased following board approval on January seventeenth of this year, and the board authorized staff to apply for this grant on March seventh, two thousand and nineteen. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're going to go on to our Building Inspector's Report.
Thank you. For the month of November, there are a total of twenty-six building permits issued, seven zoning permits issued. Total fees collected by the Building Department for the month of November, twenty-eight thousand, seven hun, or three hundred and ten dollars. Respectfully submitted, Noran King.
Thank you. Room Master's Report.
I have not prepared a report for this evening.
Okay, and then we'll go on to Chief for the Police Department Report.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank everyone who attended and helped us with the, our annual Cookie with the Cops event last Thursday night. We had a great turnout, and if you haven't been on Facebook, take a look at Facebook. We've posted some of the pictures from our event. I want to send a special thank you out to John and Chad Cropper of Crops Market. They provided all the cookies and milk for the event, and it goes without saying that without them, we wouldn't have a Cookie with Cops event, so we are greatly appreciative of their effort and partnership. We want to thank Todd Sendor from Coalex Collision. He provided some sponsorship funding so that we could get some decorations and help some of the games for the kids. And then we want to especially thank the Brandywine Wallace students because they make all the decorations for our tree, and the night, every, all the kids come in, that's one of the things they do, they decorate our tree. So we had a great event, and we want to thank everyone. This will be my final report to the Board of Supervisors on our body worn camera program. All of the required training was completed this past month by the officers, and the body worn cameras were put into service last Monday, December ninth. I know this has been a huge learning curve for the police officers, but I want to publicly thank them for their support and patience in getting this program implemented. I'd just like to take a minute and echo the comments that have already been said tonight regarding Dave Kirkner and Jay. Dave Kirkner is, was on the Board of Supervisors and was one of the gentlemen that interviewed me for this position. And over the years, Dave was a huge supporter of the Police Department. He was a huge mentor to me in regards to all the finances for the Police Department, and he also became a very good friend, and it was a very sad day. And I know that he's been going through a lot over the last couple of years with his health and so, but I also look at it as that is a blessing too because he was a great friend, and I know he's in a good place, and I know he's out of pain now, so I just wanted to say that. Jay, same goes for you. You've been a huge mentor towards me. You've always supported our Police Department. You were always a huge factor in all the police negotiations and the contracts and whatnot, and I just want to thank you for everything you've done, you've done for us, you did for me, and you will be missed.
Thank you. It was a pleasure to work with you.
And take note, he is leaving right before our next contract negotiation. Just saying. Now, I do also, Chief, I did want to mention to you, and I apologize, I meant to bring it today. District Attorney Tom Hogan sent a letter last week to me, basically talking about what a fantastic job you've done with this, this PD and with your letter of accreditation and everything that you've been doing recently, so I will bring that letter into you. I apologize. I left it at home, unfortunately, because I got it in my mail last week, so.
Oh, thank you.
But I just wanted to point that out, that the district attorney had sent that letter for your exemplary service. Okay, thank you.
Hang on, don't. So our recorded incidents, we had one thousand nine hundred and forty-five recorded incidents. We completed two hundred and eleven investigations. There were six criminal arrests, zero summary arrests, no warrant arrests, no juvenile petitions. There were only four accidents for the month of November, which is amazing. Officers issued eighty-eight traffic citations, sixty-six traffic warnings, and officers logged nine thousand, three hundred and twenty miles of patrol. We also, as I said, the department already completed its body worn camera training, and Sergeant Jim Ferraro, Corporal Steve Tyree, and Officer Bo Shepherd completed a drug interdiction class. I'd also like just to mention real quick for the board, wasn't sure if I'd updated you, but Officer Shepherd did have successful surgery to repair his torn bicep last week, and he is recovering at home, doing well. He actually showed up at the Cookies with a Cop event to get some cookies. So he's doing really well. We expect him back in about three months. And then also to everyone, please have a very safe, happy holiday, and we will see you next year. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to turn it over to the Fire Department for the report.
Evening. The fire report for the month of November, it was quite busy at the Fire Department. We had ninety-nine total incidents. We had forty-six fire calls. We had fifty-three EMS calls. In East Brandywine Township, we had sixteen fire calls. We had twenty-two medical calls. We used a hundred and sixty gallons of East Brandywine Township fuel. We had three training sessions with an average personnel of twenty-four in attendance. Some things to note at the firehouse. Exciting news for us is that our fire chief is now a new father of premature twins. He asked that any communication go through myself and the assistant chief for a period of time, as the twins were born and are in NICU for quite some time, so if the township could just note that, file it to Joe Modestair or myself. Secondly, we had a very successful breakfast with Santa Claus at the firehouse. Both of the seedings were sold out. The volunteers were able to partake in our yearly Christmas party this Sunday with a hundred and twenty-six volunteers in attendance. Little thing to note, it's actually happened this month already, but two eighty-two had a series of challenges for us the other day with three accidents at the same time during rush hour, and it was a very good collaborative effort between the Police Department, the Fire Department, in directing traffic and diverting everything. We had to even get the chief out there on site with us, so thank you, Chief, for helping us that day. And not to finish up and sound going last, but Jay, from the East Brandywine Fire Company, we want to thank you for all your efforts with us, helping us to obtain funding and being supportive of us throughout the years. We thoroughly appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, I don't believe we have any old business, so we'll go on to the new business, and the, I'm going to turn that over to Luke for the resignation of the Parks and Recreation, or...
Right, well, it's not as bad as it sounds because we have two members of a seven-member board, which is the Parks and Recreation, are stepping back from their role as participants and voting members of the Parks and Rec Board, but intend to stay involved as volunteers, and I'm grateful for the service they've provided up to this point and for any service they provide in the future. Two volunteers are Susan Massimini and Betsy Brown, who are stepping back from their appointed positions at the end of this year. Sue has been a member since two thousand and fifteen and Betsy since two thousand and twelve. Like I said, I thank them for their service. At this time, I would ask the board to consider a motion accepting the resignations of Susan Massimini and Betsy Brown from the Parks and Rec Board.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the, we have a Westwood ambulance presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. Many of you up front may know me, some of you may not, and I'll apologize to the audience here. I don't like talking with my back behind the residents here, but I do want to approach the board. I can turn, huh? Even better. I don't want to be rude to anyone here. My name's John Sly. I'm the president of Westwood Fire Company and ambulance service. I've been involved in emergency services for about twenty-six years. Served as a fire chief and ambulance chief, and now I'm serving as the president. I tend to say it's a life sentence when you're involved in volunteer fire companies, so you take different roles. One of the reasons I'm here tonight is basically to apologize for the fact that I have not been in front of this board since Westwood Ambulance has been serving this township. One of the main reasons is because your meeting is the same night as West Brandywine Township's meeting and at the exact same time. West Brandywine Township consumes about six to seven hundred calls a year for our service, and East Brandywine Township, we run an average of fifty calls a year. I do provide an annual report to the board. I know there's some new members of the board that I have not yet met. I know there's an incoming member of the board, so I just wanted to take this time to, to just get in front of you so you know who I am. I'll preface this quickly, that I'm not here to ask for any additional money or anything like that. I know that's always a hot topic for emergency services, but we have a quick change in our operational procedures that I think will affect East Brandywine Township, and I just wanted to come here this evening to explain that. A brief history of our, our fire company. We began our ambulance service in the year two thousand, and we serviced Valley and East Fallfield Township with fire, rescue, and emergency medical services. Within the first five years, we were deemed the ambulance service of the year in Pennsylvania, something we were very proud of, and we remained the last all-volunteer ambulance in Chester County up until two thousand and eleven. In two thousand and eleven, the Martins Corner Fire Company ceased operating their ambulance service. At the time, they were providing a portion of service to Wallace Township, West Callen Township, West Brandywine Township. And correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, I don't believe they covered any of East Brandywine Township at the time.
Did not.
We were asked to provide the service to those areas following their closure, and we relocated an ambulance to the Wagon Town Fire Company along Route three forty in West Callen Township. By doing so, we became a bit closer to East Brandywine areas that were previously served by the City of Coatesville Ambulance and Washington Hoos Company. So we began serving East Brandywine Township in the latter part of two thousand and eleven. In two thousand and eighteen, we were awarded some grant funds to expand our service, and I'm happy to announce that through the cooperative efforts of West Brandywine, West Callen, and Wallace Townships, that we're going to be opening a second station operating out of the West Callen Township building. And that's where this kind of comes into play for East Brandywine Township. That's the small corner of East Brandywine that we currently protect, be the East Reeseville Road area, a small portion of Apple Cross, Zinn Road, basically the southwest corner of the township. And you can see here our total calls coming, this is year-to-date through November, out of our Wagon Town Firehouse Station, we've run one thousand, four hundred and fifty-two calls, which is the busiest single-unit ambulance in Chester County with only one vehicle operating for all those calls. These are the kind of statistics we tend to provide to the municipalities, at least on an annual basis, sometimes on a monthly basis. This is East Brandywine Township, our call volume since two thousand and eleven. The first year, we were only operating for a few months. We only had twelve calls in the township, and then, as you can see, it kind of spiked up, and we run an average of forty-eight calls a year in East Brandywine. The other half of the township, I'm sure everyone is aware, is covered by Minquess Fire Company Ambulance out of Downingtown, and they're primarily closer to a lot of these incidents. We back them up anytime they're not available. So with the increase in calls that we've had, we began to investigate a second station, as I said. So this is our service area right here, and this is the Wagon Town Fire Company. It's thirty-seven square miles that we respond to, primarily in the four townships. But as you can see here, we're going to put a second station, which is identified as Station two forty-four, right there in West Brandywine's Township Building along Lafayette Road. And... where this kind of comes into play for East Brandywine Township. That's the small corner of East Brandywine that we currently protect. Be the East Reesville Road area, a small portion of Apple Cross, Zinn Road, basically the southwest corner of the township. And you can see here our total calls coming, this is year-to-date through November, out of our Wagon Town Firehouse Station, we've run 1,452 calls, which is the busiest single-unit ambulance in Chester County with only one vehicle operating for all those calls. These are the kind of statistics we tend to provide to the municipalities, at least on an annual basis, sometimes on a monthly basis. This is East Brandywine Township, our call volume since 2011. The first year, we were only operating for a few months. We only had 12 calls in the township. And then, as you can see, it kind of spiked up, and we run an average of 48 calls a year in East Brandywine. The other half of the township, I'm sure everyone is aware, is covered by Minco's Fire Company ambulance out of Downingtown, and they're primarily closer to a lot of these incidents. We back them up anytime they're not available. So, with the increase in calls that we've had, we began to investigate a second station, as I said. So, this is our service area right here, and this is the Wagon Town Fire Company. It's 37 square miles that we respond to, primarily in the four townships. But as you can see here, we're going to put a second station, which is identified as Station 244, right there in West Brandywine's Township building along Lafayette Road. So, if you can see, it's kind of difficult on the map. There, there's a lighter shaded area on the east side of that map. That is East Brandywine Township. So, coming out Culbertson Run Road, Swineheart Road would intersect right there at the five-way intersection. So, we're not terribly far away from that. In meeting with Scott and Chief D'Amico, Chief Edwards, and Chief Worster from Minco's Fire Company about a week ago, we all sat down and looked at the service area to make sure that the residents were going to be getting qualified service coming from all areas. So, we determined that we're going to just leave the service as is for right now, for the members, for the Minco's Fire Company, people that have paid their membership, they'll still be protected by Minco's. Nothing's going to change. This is a seamless transition for everyone. What we're anticipating will happen, however, is the method which the county dispatches ambulances now is done by GPS. So, if there is not an ambulance available, it's going to locate the closest ambulance that's available. So, I presume that you're going to see a little bit more presence from us in the township, just based on the fact that our geographic location has moved a little bit closer. So, I just wanted to come here tonight to explain that. If people see us, then that's probably the reason why. I always like the fact that no one sees us because that means no one's sick and injured, and that's a good thing. So, we kind of like to fly under the radar as much as possible. But a quick, few items at a glance here. We try to provide a third-party audit to each township at the end of each fiscal year. Scott, I believe I turned those in already for last year.
Yes.
And you do get an annual report from us referencing our calls in East Brandywine Township. We have 27 total employees and a $1.3 million annual budget. As of tomorrow, we'll be picking up two new ambulances to replace a 17-year-old vehicle, and so we will have six ambulances frontline. We do cover six townships. It is Thursday, and this is my fifth township meeting of the week. So, I do understand that these things do take up a lot of time, so I won't take up too much more of yours, but we're expected to respond to about 3,200 calls next year. I'm happy to provide anything that the board would like from us. Again, there's no transition, no change that anyone is going to see at this point. It's just a matter of educating everyone that we are going to be located a little bit closer, and you may see us a little bit more often. We've been working with our colleagues at East Brandywine Fire Company since we entered this partnership in 2011, and I haven't seen any issues and don't foresee any in the future. We're just very happy to be able to provide this service. And one of the big things we pride ourselves on is the transparency with our elected officials. Like I said, we cover six municipalities, so I have 24 board members I report to. And although we do have 27 paid employees, I am a volunteer, so much of this time is spent making sure that the community is aware of our services and what we can do. We are here for any of the residents, and whatever we can do, we're happy to do so.
Thank you very much.
Okay?
And I will say that John has been in regular communication with me. He was telling me the same thing he said tonight. There's a conflict with meetings, so he couldn't get here. Anything that I thought the board should know about Westwood's operations, I think I've communicated. So, I don't think there was an apology needed, John. You know, you've kept us surprised of what's going on, so I appreciate that.
Okay, so now we're going to turn it over. I don't know, I guess, Tom, you'll be heading this off maybe, or we are, for the zoning hearing application. And I'm not even going to begin to try and pronounce it, but I'll leave it up to Scott.
Yes, Titian. Yes, Titian.
I just call you Benny.
That's fine.
So, who wants to head this off?
Well, typically, the applicant comes up and requests what they want. I think they were already before the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission recommended support of the application, subject to some conditions, which I don't recall.
Okay, welcome. Come on up.
Mr. Guyer, if you don't mind, just please state your name and address for the record for the.
Thanks, Kyle. My name is Gregory Guyer. My address is 3732 East Fisherville Road, Downingtown, PA 19335. And we've been in contact with Scott and Jeff regarding Benny and Marie's application for a garage. So, we've submitted that, and in doing so, Benny asked me to represent him, so we gave a letter to the township so I could speak on his behalf. So, basically, they're looking to do a two-car garage, just for cars only. Mainly, part of the reason is because of Mrs. Marie has a disability that the garage would help with, but also, yeah, just a place to park their cars undercover. In doing that, Jeff and I measured the driveway and all the existing impervious structure on the property, and we're short of what would be needed. So, the application, we're looking to do a water-retention bed in order to make up the difference that we need to meet the standard and then some.
Okay, and Tom, if you would, one more time, the Planning Commission.
The Planning Commission recommended that the Board of Supervisors support the application, subject to a condition that the applicant provide infiltration for the excess impervious cover.
And you guys were okay with that?
Yes.
Do you guys have any questions?
I have no questions.
Okay. As you know, we can only hand it over to the zoning board, but you have my blessing on it, and.
I have no problem with the application, subject to the condition that the Planning Commission.
So, good luck.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to go into the MVR, and I will turn it over to Tom for this, for the decision on the application for preliminary plan approval.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see Ms. Dunn, who's approached, and the engineer for the applicant. And typically, the applicant would request, make whatever requests they want to request to the board. So, I would suggest that you let Ms. Dunn explain why she's here.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mr. Fisher. It's nice to be here with you on the last evening. I feel like you've been with us every step along the way of this thing, so it kind of comes full circle. We are here requesting preliminary plan approval on the application that was filed November 9th of 2018. It's been a long road to get here, as you know, from a zoning text amendment to conditional use. And last, not last week, but two weeks ago, we were happy to receive a recommendation from your Planning Commission, subject to a couple of conditions, notably that we would comply with the comments of the township engineer, the Panoni, review letter as subject to, you know, the discretion of the township engineer, as to whether or not any modifications or otherwise were appropriate. So, that was acceptable to us, and subject to complying with all state-required permits and other local regulatory agencies, we would request that you approve the preliminary plan.
Okay, so I've had a chance to read through most of this, and from what I'm seeing, there's still a lot of outstanding items, as well as some stormwater issues.
So, there are some outstanding items. I wouldn't characterize it as a lot, and I would remind the board that when Panoni first undertook its review of this plan in December of 2018, I believe, is the first review letter, it was reviewed as though it was a final plan submission. It was not reviewed within the context of the requirements under the township's code for preliminary plan approval. So, these comments indicate outstanding items that would apply during final land development approval as well. And I don't think that the applicant should be prejudiced because the evaluation was conducted in that manner. We don't have the option of going through preliminary slash final land development, so we shouldn't be held to a final land development standard in terms of preliminary plan approval.
How are you prejudiced?
Well, that we have to comply with basically what brings us into a final plan approval when we're only in the preliminary phase. And a lot, quite frankly, a lot of permitting and more fine-tuning of engineering takes place once an applicant is satisfied that those aren't going to be sunk costs, that we do have the preliminary plan approval that allows us to have the confidence to go ahead and undertake those more fine-tuning type sign issues.
Well, as you've heard, I've been sitting up here for a long time, and it seems to me like there are an awful lot of issues, and this is not as close as I think we would normally want to see a plan before we give a preliminary plan approval.
I'd be happy to address any specific issue. It's hard for me to speak in terms of ambiguities, but ultimately, I don't see Nate Klein here this evening, but he was here before the Planning Commission on December 4th and was satisfied that there would be no changes in the layout of the significant capital improvements of the plan, being the trails, the roads, the design and layout of units, in terms of fine-tuning what needs to be done to address these final plan level items.
Though we don't have the engineer Nate Klein here today, we do have Mr. Boldez and Mr. Heinrich. So, you guys have both gone through this. What sticks out most, or at least to you guys?
For the last three submissions, nothing's been addressed, basically, from my review letters. That's why I haven't done a review of the latest submission. There's nothing changed from the last time, essentially. So.
What is that?
Pardon?
What specifically? I don't have your review letter. Which date is that?
October. The last review letter I did was October 1st.
Right.
October 1st?
Yeah. And if I may, Mr. Chairman, I think you received a copy of this email.
Yes.
But because Mr. Klein couldn't be here tonight, he did write an email to the board indicating that while my, and this is, I'm quoting what it says, "While my preference is typically for the applicant to grant an extension so that these issues could be resolved, if the board sees fit to approve this project, I have no issues with the draft resolution circulated by Tom," meaning myself, "and the conditions appear adequate." I'm sorry. So, I think if Mr. Klein were here, he would say that his preference would be that the applicant grant an extension.
And where are you guys with that?
Well, in terms of.
Granting an extension?
We are not in a position to grant an extension. We don't, we can't. Frankly, we've been placed in a position at this point where actually, the board solicitor, who is also the Planning Commission solicitor, and the municipal authority solicitor, placed us in a position where we had very little leverage to extend the terms of our agreement of sale with the school district. And so, we are between a rock and a hard place in terms of giving an extension, but I don't see why an extension is necessary on the substantive issues in any event. I don't think an extension would be called for even if we were in a position to grant one. We have recommendation from the township's Planning Commission. We have met the standards of the township's code under 350-24 for the contents of a preliminary plan application. As a matter of fact, I sent a letter to Mr. Esti following the October Planning Commission meeting, where all the parties agreed that there were some items outstanding that needed to be addressed, and those items were four. One, a letter from the township's Trail Committee documenting its recommendation of the plan's trail layout and suggested conditions or requirements. We received that letter from the township's Trail Committee on October 16th, 2019. I trust the board was copied on it. If not, I have a copy right here. Item two, in response to.
While we're going through these, where are we with one, with you guys?
Can I have a copy of it?
I'm sorry?
Where are we with one? You had it October.
I said, we have it right here.
Okay, October, you said you received it October 16th, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and you said that's an outstanding item?
No. This was, it was outstanding on October 4th.
Okay.
So, this is what had been indicated to us, we needed for preliminary plan, recommendation and approval. We received that on October 16th, 2019. Item two was in response to comment number eight of Panoni's September 27th, 2019 review, a letter from the township's fire marshal communicating review and satisfaction with the plan's road dimensions and internal circulation. We received that on, it's dated October 29th, 2019. Number three was responses to review comment number 95 of the review regarding wetlands delineation report. We complied with that. Mr. Brower can attest to that. And Nate agreed when he was here before the Planning Commission. And then, item number four was responses to review comments number 52 through 59 of the September 27th, 2019 review letter with respect to stormwater management, with respect to our stormwater management report. We complied with that item, as Mr. Brower can attest to in greater detail. I'd like to also advise the board that in addition to these four items that we were required to meet, we went above and beyond. We went before the zoning hearing board and received special exception relief for our proposed riparian buffer encroachment, steep slope conservation district encroachments for the township access road, and for roads D and E that run through the community. So, we are now completely compliant with the zoning ordinance for this plan. In addition, even though we don't have to do any sort of sophisticated, or really any municipal authority sewer-related things for preliminary plan approval, other than submission of a planning module, which actually, this property has an approved planning module, outstanding from K-HOB, that is just undergoing an amendment process with DEP. We received a letter of intent from the Apple Cross Operations, Apple Cross Club Operations LLC, indicating its willingness to permit us to meet our state DEP mandated storage requirement for backup effluent over at the Apple Cross Lagoons. And so, that being said, we met every item that was indicated to us needed to be achieved, and then some.
Okay, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
I do want to give Mr. Heinrich and Mr. Boldez some time, just because I started talking and then we got cut off on that. So, you said that you have had the submissions since October, and that nothing, October 1st, and that nothing has changed since then for you?
Yes. Let me just put it this way. If you look at my October 1st review letter, it's in two parts. There's one part on the traffic impact assessment, there's another part on the preliminary plan. Under the traffic impact study, there was my comment, there was a response, there was a new comment, or maybe satisfied, whatever. And for the most part, the comments have been addressed under the traffic impact study. If you look at the preliminary plan, there's an initial comment, there's a previous comment, and there's a new comment. There has never been a response. So, at this point in time, I have no indication from the applicant that they're going to comply with any of this stuff.
Which, what is this? Which, I'm trying to find it.
The October 1st letter. I can give you a hard copy.
I can respond.
It's in the packet.
Oh, is it out here?
Yes, in the packet.
So, I'll let Ms. Dunn respond, and then we'll.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to make a comment and ask a question. And I believe I heard this at the Planning Commission also from Ms. Dunn, that somehow I have prevented, personally, apparently, from the applicant getting an extension under their agreement of sale. And tonight, I hear that, I think on behalf of the township, the Planning Commission, and the municipal authority, I have prevented the applicant from getting an extension. And I did no such thing. And I would like to know. And I would like to know, I'd like the explanation of that.
Certainly. So, I don't know if the Board of Supervisors is aware, but the East Brandywine Township Municipal Authority regulations include a requirement for community development that the community developer applicant provide capacity, not only up to 100% drip capacity for its own community, but in fact, 50% in excess. So, 150% of your community's needs are to be provided. And that is, the justification for that is that if something happens, that reserve area will be available for your community. Now, practically speaking, every discussion that we've had surrounding this acknowledges that this community isn't going to even need what's earmarked for 100%. I think everyone speaks very candidly about that. And in fact, the township, as you may know, is in the process of undergoing a rerate with PADEP in recognition of the fact that what is reserved for Applecross and other communities has not been necessary in terms of the estimated gallons per day that are attributed to single-family dwellings, townhomes, et cetera. So, to that end, when we design this community, we comply, even though it doesn't strike me as something that is rational or reasonable or legal. We have 150%, and then we have a little bit more. I think it's about 4,000 gallons per day. And the school district was interested in receiving that 4,000 gallons per day, or a pledge of that 4,000 gallons per day to be reserved for the school district's needs, basically in exchange for an extension accommodation of the agreement of sale. And it's my understanding, I wasn't present, and this was not in writing, that the school district solicitor reached out to the municipal authority solicitor, who is representing you here this evening, is the board solicitor, and requested whether or not we would be permitted to do that, so that he could advise his client whether or not that was advisable. And that he was told no, that capacity that is even excess of our 150%, so I'm talking about above and beyond our 150% requirement, belonged to the municipal authority and could only be basically, you know, rationed out to other parties at their discretion, which is just patently false. So, but in any event, it placed us in a position where the school district is going to be conservative and say, oh, well, if that's what the township and the municipal authority are saying, then no, we can't, we can't enter into that agreement with you.
Well, I don't have any information about that except this. I did speak with the attorney representing the school district in the potential purchase of the tract part of the Plank Farm on, I call it, the north side of 322, across the street from the farm. And I think he mentioned this issue during the conversation, and I don't, at no time did I say to him that the school district could not use that disposal area. What I said to him is the allocation and the distribution of treated effluent is the prerogative of the authority. That's really all I said. And if that, if that was a problem, that somehow he interpreted something I said, which prevented an extension, then I wish somebody would have contacted me, because I certainly could have cleared it up.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
So, did that answer?
No, it does not, it does not answer. It's an equivocation to say, no, it's only done at the discretion of the authority is not accurate. If it's ours and it's fit out with facilities that are approved, designed and approved for drip, and it's in excess of the 150%, that is 100% in our purview, and there is no reason, no logical, rational, or legal reason that the municipal authority would not permit that to happen. So, no, I don't, I don't think that that's a sufficient answer to the question of whether or not that particular contractual negotiation was jettisoned because of a...
I don't know anything about the contract between NVR and the school district. Don't know anything about it.
I think this is a good time for Mr. Boldaz to jump in with your thoughts.
There was a resolution passed years ago requiring every development to provide 150% disposal capacity. That was, concept arrived, we arrived at that concept because this treatment point does not have a stream discharge permit. The only, the only way to get rid of treated effluent is to spray it onto the golf course or drip irrigation. And drip irrigation does have its problems. A lot of times, there's a lot of valves in the field. So the 50% really is to protect the municipal authority so that they can meet their permanent requirements for discharge in case something happens in one or some other field. So, for the Weaver tract, there's a number of different areas, a number of different zones where treated effluent is applied and then goes through a cycle. So this zone will be land-applied for a certain period and then a certain number of gallons will go into another zone. So all those zones are controlled by valves. The valve gets hung up or it needs to be replaced, that's why the 50% is in there.
But is it theirs or is it yours? Do they have the land necessary for their, to meet their needs? Is it, are you saying that it's up to the municipal authority to determine, no, that's not yours, that's ours? That we get to determine where it goes?
The municipal authority would take dedication of that.
But is that, but I'm saying, that's, I guess my question is, so you're not, so there's no dispute that they have the land available to meet the requirement?
I don't think there's any dispute that they had the land...
Then what's the problem then?
I don't, I'm not understanding the discussion back and forth, so I don't, I don't really know what the problem is.
If I may, the applicant is required to provide land area which will dispose of 150% of the amount of effluent generated by that development. They don't have to provide any more than that. But there is data which suggests that there is additional area on the site which would go beyond the 150%.
So they do meet that?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Joe.
That's correct, yes.
I believe that's correct.
I think Ms. Dunn is correct.
But there's nothing that...
About 4,000 gallons.
Right.
Somewhere five, 3,000 to 5,000 gallons, I think is...
And all those facilities, I'm sorry, Joe. Just as you recall from Maple View, all those facilities are dedicated and conveyed to the municipal authority as part of the operation of the public sewer system. So, the applicant doesn't have to provide more than 150%. The rest of the story is that the authority has been working with, well, we've begun to work with this developer and the Maple View developer at the developer's request to come up with a joint disposal system which will be more economical for everybody. But that, that is, and that 4,000 gallons was part of that discussion, but that whole discussion is only in its infancy at this point.
And that's a different, that's a, I'm sorry, Mr. Winters, go ahead.
I don't understand. They meet it.
Nope.
But the extra is not theirs to sell or to convey to whoever they want, or is it, it's up to you to decide?
No, it's not. It's not for them to convey.
I disagree, and that's...
They can't, it would be illegal for a private entity to provide sewer treatment capacity or disposal to another developer or you as a homeowner or anyone else.
That's what Applecross does. They provide the lagoons.
I don't want to get too far removed into an esoteric discussion about backdoor condemnation and basically that's what this is, but at the end of the day, if you look at the preliminary plan content requirement, under your code, all it provides is that with respect to the municipal authority and the municipal authority's regulations, we need to, and the state regulations under DEP, we need to have submitted a sewer planning module, and we need to have demonstrated that we basically have sketch plan accommodations for the proposed sewer system for the community. We've far exceeded that. So in terms of denying preliminary plan approval based upon anything that would be in a Hydratera review letter, that would be not permitted under your own code. I would submit to you.
It sounds like you have extra, even more than 150%.
We have, we have gone far beyond in our sewer planning than is required for preliminary plan approval under your code. That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, once again.
Yes.
The subdivision, first I'd say historically, the municipal authority engineer who was here this evening has reviewed subdivision and land developments for sanitary sewer issues. The township engineer defers to the municipal authority engineer on those issues. And that's why Hydratera issued a review letter on this project. I would point out to the board that section 350-47 of your subdivision and land development ordinance is entitled sewer treatment and disposal. And there are many requirements regarding what needs to be shown on a preliminary subdivision plan, and several places where it says, "The facilities must be in conformance with all applicable township, municipal authority, state, county, and federal ordinances and regulations." So, Mr. Boldaz, as the president of Hydratera, the municipal authorities engineer, was reviewing this plan, or has been reviewing this plan, to make sure it complies with the authority standards and the subdivision and land development ordinance standard. It's just not true that the only requirement is that you have planning module approval.
So, Mr. Esty cited to 350-47, but that's not what your code has for, that's not the code section for preliminary plan content. Preliminary plan content is at 350-24. And with respect to sewer planning, you would look at subsection...
Well, again, Mr. Chairman, if I may...
No, no, Mr. Esty, I will respond.
I'm sorry, I thought you were finished. But...
B. Four. All plans shall be accompanied by planning modules for land development provided by the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. Check. We met that. Including information with regard to the means of sewage disposal and provision of water supply. Check. We did that. Where onsite sewage facilities are contemplated, the township shall be provided with sufficient information to make a determination if the proposed subdivision or land development adequately meets the sewage disposal requirements of the township. Check. I think Mr. Boldaz just said he's confident that we are providing enough disposal area for our community under the township's standards. We shall include submission by the applicant of certain test pit and percolation test information as called for in 350-47. It doesn't say you need to meet every standard of 350-47. It says test pit and percolation information as called for in 350-47 of this chapter. Check. Now, I don't think that we're in a position to argue about this. This is what your code says.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may, once again, I want to point out one general matter before I forget. That, and the board knows this, the preliminary approval is meant to basically be the parameters by which the review and decision on the final plan is made. You cannot add additional conditions or additional requirements at final plan approval if they weren't addressed at the preliminary plan or, and shown on the preliminary plan or covered by conditions acceptable to the applicant. You cannot add additional requirements at final plan. It's legally prohibited.
I disagree.
That's always been my understanding.
That's the case.
No, you can't add additional, you cannot add additional requirements outside of the law, outside of state and local regulations, and outside of your code.
You can add...
But you, every prelim, every final plan, unless it's granted a waiver, it's understood that a preliminary plan, in order to achieve final plan approval, will comply with your ordinance, state and local regulations, and permitting approvals. Mr. Esty, that was...
I'm sorry.
This is, you know what?
We can disagree about what it is. We're going to rely on, I'm going to rely on the advice of the solicitor, which is consistent with the advice I've heard for 20 years.
But, Mr. Fisher, this is, this is the issue. Your solicitor, who is sitting here with the board this evening, has an incredible conflict of interest, because he's sitting here lobbying for another client...
I'm not lobbying for...
The Township's municipal authority. And despite the fact, and what's mind-boggling to me, despite the fact that another one of his clients, the Planning Commission, recommended approval, he's subverting the vote of that client. I mean, what are we doing here?
He's not subverting it at all.
He's arguing against it.
But, you know, I've sat here patiently listening to you, and to be interrupted, to me, is unbelievable.
Jay, I don't think she interrupted you.
She did.
I think it started from Mr. Esty's, then Kyle, then you.
The Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. We can choose to accept it or not. That's always been our prerogative. And when I sit back and listen to what you're saying, if your client is in a bind because of the timelines that were in the agreement of sale, I'm going to tell you what my three-year-old granddaughter told me when I was trying to explain something to her. It ain't my problem. I'm sorry that your client didn't foresee how long it was going to take to get through this process. When I'm looking at a revision, a plan revision submitted to our engineer on November 13th, 2019, another, the post-construction storm water management report, November 13th, wetland delineation report, November 11th, response letter, November 13th, his review was completed by December 3rd, and I go through the review, and it's outstanding, no information provided. Outstanding, outstanding, outstanding. Comments throughout the entire letter. When we have granted preliminary plan approval, the majority of the outstanding items have been third-party agency items that have to be addressed, not additional information to comply with our ordinances.
Let me ask you a question. Let's just put it out there. Carlino development, right now, do they have 150% set aside, Joe?
They have 100%?
They have 150% set aside.
For the...
Effluent, for treated effluent. Section 350...
Do not, they do not, and there is a previous agreement.
What was, but I don't understand.
Talking about giant property.
That plan was approved while I'm a board member. So what was agreement?
There is a, there was a past agreement with Polte.
Do they have any treated, do they have any land set aside for their own treatment?
They do not.
But this applicant does, the fact they have more than enough.
This is a housing complex, it's a lot different.
Doesn't matter, it's a piece of land. It's this big or that big, it has more.
There's no issue with them in 150%. That's not a...
Jay, my point is, you voted for final approval for Carlino, who didn't meet the statute. They have over the capacity. So why would we sit here and say, we're not happy with the extra?
This is one of, one of...
Nobody said we weren't happy right now.
But I would like to...
Is that the main issue here? To me, it's the biggest, biggest issue is, they don't meet that requirement.
My issue is, when you go through the Panoni review letter, there are too many outstanding things.
He says on 3C, a pond. A pond, apparently, it's on the waters of the United States. So is the pond at the Spence parcel. That's on the same map. We didn't, we didn't require them to uphold a 50-foot riparian corridor. We said that it was an artificial pond. 3E, riparian corridor. They went to zoning hearing board, and I believe, did you ask for averance? Did you receive averance?
We did. We, I'm sorry, special exceptions. We got special exceptions.
3F. He's good, he's good as long as this is done before the final plan. Number seven, crossing wetlands with the DEP, I'm sorry, the EPA.
That's a state, that's a state plan.
That's something that's going to be outside contingent upon final approval. Number 10, it's up to the board, to our discretion. Number 16A, common open space, it's not a big deal, it can be done during final. 16C, open space maintenance, same thing. 16J, HOA agreement, that's something that can be done before final. 16K, open space issues, trails in the facility for the clubhouse, for the older folks who are going to be residing there. That's something that's preliminary, shouldn't stop that. 21J... 21J, the loop road bypass for Annie Heinrich, are you requiring them, you calculated traffic impact fee?
Correct.
So that could be used towards that. Isn't that the whole point of a traffic impact fee, is to be able to use that towards whatever is on our capital improvement plan?
Yeah, but we're talking about the right-of-way for the bypass.
About it. It's not, they.
It's shown on a.
Previous board said they don't want to do loop roads.
Yes, but you have documentation in the township that maintains it.
I don't.
And you're collecting traffic impact fees for it.
But what is that? I don't understand that. We told them not to include that.
Okay, but.
Why are we saying now this is going to hold up your approval?
I can't speak for Nate, but I think he's just putting it in there because that was a comment I raised.
That was your letter.
That has not been, not been resolved.
Nate didn't have it in there. I'm talking about your letter, 21J.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I misunderstood you. Yeah, it is my, my.
That's the only unresolved on your letter, is about these off-site improvements. You have the fee, they already agreed to pay the fee, that can be used towards any, any project on our capital improvement plan.
I have comments nine through 21 that are, for the most part, unresolved.
Crosswalk. Well, can't that be done later?
I don't know. Like I said, I have never received a response or any updated plans that says they'll, suggest they'll comply.
But would you agree with me that that's a, an item that is addressed under final plan submission under your township's code?
It, it could be, but it may not be. I, I'm not, I don't think I'm the one in position to give you a definitive answer on that.
It is. And while we're, while we're taking a.
I'm just going to keep saying it. It was for the Carlino plan. We approved final plan, and we decided to.
Put the sidewalks later.
What I don't understand is, though, that you've objected to that personally.
I've objected for eminent domain for their sewer line.
From day one, but why would you, why would we make, if that was a mistake, why would we make the same mistake again?
We don't.
We did, we did. We did, Tom. Tom, we don't have an ordinance, it goes preliminary, and then final. We waived that for them.
That was not my question.
That was, that was two-thirds the board vote, not mine.
Well, I can't say anything else, but I just urge the board to read the Panoni letter.
I'm not against, I'm against.
There are serious, there are serious issues.
I just read them all. They're not serious.
If you only look at stormwater management. And, and by the way, in, in comment six on page three, Mr. Klein says, "The applicant has indicated a wetlands report was included as part of submission. However, neither the township nor Panoni received a wetland report."
It doesn't matter.
That's what it says.
He acknowledged in front of, Planning Commission, Tom. He acknowledged in front of the Planning Commission that he had received it.
I wasn't finished speaking. Well, let's not talk about the wetlands.
Why, why, is this not convenient for you?
Let's talk about the stormwater issues. There are several comments in here where Mr. Klein indicates that there is not information to demonstrate that this stormwater management system is going to work.
But can't.
And for that reason alone, I think it's unwise to grant preliminary approval.
But could you say, here's a track of land, 126 acres, Mr. Weaver, 126 acres. Can they manage, they're under the impervious surface requirements.
With all due respect, that's not the way we do things.
Well, it is, it is the way we do things with other people. That's my point.
But, but again, if, if that was a mistake, which you've advocated, why would you make the same mistake?
You guys did four times. You tell me.
Wait a minute. Why would you make the same mistake again? I don't understand.
It has nothing to do with mistake.
I, I, I object to it being called a mistake, Mr. Estes.
I'm not going to say.
Your township's, please let me finish. Your township's legislation also has a section for final plan content. And under final plan approval content, it includes an entire paragraph for stormwater management. And it says, "With final plan submission, submit a stormwater management plan as provided in chapter 345, Stormwater Management, consistent with the terms of preliminary plan approval and modified as necessary to reflect the proposal for final approval." So, if your own code anticipates that stormwater management is not in the final stages in preliminary plan review, it's, you can't not follow your own code. And you can't sit here and call your code a mistake. If your code is a mistake, that is what this board does as the legislative body of this township. You amend it. But right now, our plan is subject to this code. So, we shouldn't be held to a different standard than what you've delineated for us to provide during preliminary plan approval process. And that's for stormwater management. That's number one. And, and second, I mean, that, that's on us. That's the risk we take. You're not taking that risk. If you give us preliminary plan approval contingent upon compliance with section 345 and state, and other state and local requirements and permits, and we don't get that, then we don't get final approval. So, there's virtually no risk for the township, only for us. And it comports with your code. And I would, now I would like to address the Heinrich and Klein issues. And I would have the board recall that we dealt with this in depth during the conditional use process. And the board included almost an entire page relating to a condition that our plans would comply with the comments and recommendations of Heinrich and Klein set forth in the correspondence dated February 13th, 2019, with the following additional clarifications. One, in response to paragraph five, applicant shall not be responsible for construction of a roundabout at the intersection of Bonsville Road and Reeseville Road. Two, in response to paragraph 10, applicant shall eliminate the mid-block crossing of Ballinger Road shown on the concept plan, instead providing a pedestrian crosswalk and accessible ramps in compliance with PennDOT standards. Did we do that? Thank you. Next, applicant shall install a sidewalk or pathway as determined by the board during land development along the west side of Ballinger Road within the right-of-way from Empire Road, Road A, until it connects with the existing sidewalk pathway on the west side of Ballinger. Sorry. Applicant shall not be required to install a sidewalk along the east side of Ballinger Road from Road A leading along the property frontage unless the above option is determined to not be feasible during land development. Three, in response to paragraph 11 in the Heinrich letter, the location of sidewalks along the access drive leading to Reeseville Road and along the property frontage along Reeseville Road shall be determined by the board as part of land development. Four, in response to paragraph 13 and 14 in the Heinrich letter, to the extent that provisions in the zoning ordinance contradict these comments, applicant shall comply with the zoning ordinance. And five, paragraph 16 shall be construed as a general observation and not an affirmative obligation. We have done everything we can to address the traffic letters. Mr. Heinrich was present for that negotiation that led to this condition being reduced to writing, and the Board of Supervisors signed this. So I find it mildly objectionable to be sitting here now and have the board say, that's meaningless. Now we're talking about new review. Now we're talking about new recommendations. Now we're talking about new conditions. It's not what we agreed to. This is the decision in order of the board from June of this year. And we've complied. And we're paying a traffic impact fee. We've acknowledged that. So, issues outstanding relating to roads is, is within the purview of PennDOT in terms of the issuance of our HOP. And this isn't something we should be talking about at this juncture.
But we do have an awful lot of outstanding items on this list that is obviously brought to our attention from our solicitor, as well as from our engineer.
But Nate agreed that many of these were final land development issues. And he also agreed, he also agreed that the risk was on us in terms of, if, if there was something, some modification that needed to happen to this plan, it would be in terms of losing units to expand stormwater management facility. So, so fine, we lose some profit, some profitability. We acknowledge that. But it's not going to change the layout of the community. He acknowledged that. Enough to make your Planning Commission comfortable to recommend approval.
So, here's the conundrum that I see. You say absolutely no way for an extension, but you want a decision. And the decision can go either way, right? So, I'll ask you one last time. Is there a negotiation for an extension?
Let me ask you something first, if I may. My concern right now is that Nate is not here. I would interpret that as his level of comfort with what happened at the Planning Commission.
No, it was a short notice, that's why.
You had to go to another meeting.
But, no, I understand. That's, but that's what I was, that's what I was interpreting before I heard that there was an email. So let me, let me back up. When Mr. Estes let, read into the record an email from Mr. Klein, am I permitted to see that?
Sure.
And while you're doing that, I'm going to note that in the Planning Commission, my understanding was that when he was asked.
You can see part of it.
If he could.
Because it has string emails.
If the plan was going to have to change, he indicated that he could not say with confidence that it would not change. So.
Well, Mr. Rawlings and Mr. Wagner are here this evening, so maybe we.
Well, what, the Planning Commission is advisory, so.
But they were here. They heard what Mr. Klein said.
What did they?
We don't have minutes. We don't have, Mr. Estes wouldn't even provide me with written confirmation.
We have, we have the minutes. That's what Mr. Fisher was just reading.
We don't have official minutes because they haven't been approved.
So.
Was that stenographer, Scott?
We, we did, I think Mr. Piercele provided an excerpt from the Planning Commission minutes.
And that was from the stenographer?
And that indicates Chairman Rawlings made a recommendation for preliminary plan approval with the applicant agreeing to Panoni's letter dated December 3rd, Hydratera's letter dated December 3rd, with discussions to be settled by the board on items one and three. The Heinrich and Klein Associates incorporate October 1st letter.
Can you find that?
What are you looking for?
All current plans, all current new plans, plus the applicant will do their due diligence on waivers needed, getting permits together in a timely manner, and meeting with Mr. Klein.
I would agree with that. I would 100% agree with that, with the exception of the board having special knowledge, the Planning Commission did not, that we had already settled with this Board of Supervisors what our obligations were with respect to the Heinrich and Klein review letter. It's reduced to writing and signed by the board. I, I don't see how you can renege on it now.
Wait a minute. The conditional use decision came out before Mr. Klein's letter of October 1st. So you couldn't have resolved those issues.
Yes, but to the extent that any of the issues that we were absolved of in the decision in order relating to the conditional use are duplicative in this letter, then those are off the table. So you can't just say comply. You have to actually examine it. And I, I do agree. We can, we can comply with everything in the Hydratera review letter with the exceptions of one and three, exactly like the Planning Commission said. And we will comply with everything in the Panoni review letter to the satisfaction of Panoni. 100%.
So say that statement one more time. You'll, you'll comply with everything in the Panoni letter?
Yeah, unless Nate, excuse me, unless a Panoni representative, I'm assuming it's Nate, I don't know if Panoni is your engineer or Nate is, but unless the township engineer otherwise agrees that it's been resolved or it's appropriate to, to, to request a modification, to request and receive a modification. For example, there's a street tree requirement. We're requesting a waiver from that just because of the size of the community. We've been over this with the Planning Commission at length. The lots are small. The street tree spacing under your code requires them to be every 30 feet. In five, 10 years, that would be massive overcrowding. It would be incredibly aesthetically unpleasing, things like that. As long as the township engineer agrees that that's an onerous requirement and it should be modified or waived for, for our plan, we will comply.
All right. So we're going to go back to my original question. And I said, there is a possibility that this could go one of two ways. And I wanted to give you one last chance to consider a extension to this. And you were going to answer it, and then you.
I did, yes, thank you. I was going to ask a question, and I'm, I'm looking at this, and I, my confusion is, this letter that, this email that came from Nate Klein indicates that he is, has no issues with the draft resolution circulated by Tom, and the conditions appear adequate. I've never seen this. This is an email that sees all three supervisors, and it's dated for earlier today, which means that there were preemptive deliberations on our plan occurring before we even appeared here this evening.
There were no preemptive.
You drafted a resolution?
Wait a minute. I did draft a resolution.
I mean, can I see it?
I drafted two of them.
He drafted two.
I just drafted two of them. The board has to be prepared to make a decision because I was under the impression that you will not grant an extension. There are too many complex issues in this matter to expect the board to sit here and formulate conditions that they might want to impose sort of on the run. So, so it's commonplace.
It is not.
For the solicitor, it certainly is. We just did it, well, I won't say even the name, but it's very commonplace for that to happen. And that's what happened to you.
I, I have to say, in all my years, I've never seen a solicitor.
Well, that's what we're here for.
Draft a resolution before the board sits here and talks it through with the applicant, and talks through what the applicant would be willing to agree to.
It's, it's, it's only for the board's consideration. They didn't adopt any resolution.
That's what I mean. They were deliberating over conditions that you had proposed.
The board wasn't deliberating.
Well, Nate deliberated over it.
He didn't.
He reviewed it.
You can't deliberate.
He reviewed it and offered comment on it. What is your definition of deliberate?
You can't deliberate with yourself.
Deliberate with yourself? There are multiple people on this email.
Nate had a copy of the resolution. He looked at it in his office. He didn't deliberate with the board. He didn't, in fact, I.
No one has talked with, with our engineers, so let's be clear about that.
I'm not concerned about talking with the engineer.
And I do not speak to Nate, or communicate with him by email.
What are you talking about, Tom? This is an email from him to you about a resolution that you drafted and distributed for review. And it was done without, I mean, I just looked at the minutes from the last Township Board of Supervisors meeting. They didn't direct you to, they didn't make a resolution for you to draft something that had conditions on it that we had agreed to?
They did not.
They did not.
I have to, I have to do, our office has to do, we provide legal advice to the Board of Supervisors and the township. That's our responsibility under the second-class township code. In order to do that properly, I felt and believed it was appropriate to provide them with the parameters of making a decision, either granting this plan or denying this plan. There's nothing improper about that.
There is something very improper about that.
Well, that's.
That's a Sunshine Act violation, Tom. I think you know that.
I think there's other things. It's not a Sunshine Act violation.
Tom.
The board did not discuss it.
Well, that's why I want to give you one more. I don't understand that. If they, so, if it doesn't change the configuration.
Can you come up and, and speak to that, please, Adam? Because i- if the biggest issue is going to be the stormwater, listen, I'll table the, this for, for now, because if we can come to some resolution based upon Mr. Brower's representations of the stormwater management facilities, which seem to be the, the issue that is the hang-up for the board, we've discussed this at length since the Planning Commission in anticipation of our pre-application meetings with, with the Army Corps of Engineers and DEP. And Mr. Brower can speak to what impact, if any, worst-case scenario, what impact, if any, our need to modify the stormwater management facilities will have on this plan.
Thank you. Adam Brower with E.B. Walsh. And I would say, Jay, I do appreciate your point. Obviously, I've been here, I think, doing plans as long as you've been a supervisor, so I, I get where you're coming from with, with your train of thought. I would say to that extent, though, with the comments, and there are numerous comments that are refinement of the calculations, it is a fairly involved project, no doubt about it, with the stormwater management. A lot of it is involved with, and I'm not going to bore you with, with the details, but extensive testing that the type of systems required, 90-some infiltration tests throughout the entire property. So a lot of it is candidly dealing with refinement of the reports, of showing that documentation. And it's really that, that finite level, which candidly, and obviously hasn't been submitted, Nate hasn't reviewed it, so I'm not trying to suggest anything that this doesn't need to be done, but we've actually taken those comments and gone ahead and addressed them and addressed them with one exception, which requires, again, a meeting with DEP, and that is, of course, the pond, which I think you touched on ever so briefly. We are scheduling a meeting with DEP and the Army Corps about the pond. We're utilizing the pond for stormwater management. That's currently what's being proposed. We have discussed that topic with DEP. And as far as a 105 permit, they didn't feel there was a permit required as an encroachment permit. The Army Corps said it would probably be what's called a nationwide permit versus no permit at all. They felt nationwide, which is similar to a general permit that DEP issues. So, we don't think it's problematic with the pond. We're scheduled, we should be having that meeting in January, and then that would be lumped together with our other encroachment permits. That being said, sake of discussion, we evaluated it, you know, should the pond need to stay for whatever reason, and the buffer would then be enforced around it. We would simply take out those lots around it and put a basin above there. So, obviously, I'm trying to do what I have with my current plan and do it as a bio-retention basin, which I think candidly DEP is typically in favor of. But if we need to, we would simply remove the lots above it.
And this will all be done before you come back to final plan approval, plus our engineers and consultants?
Correct.
Any responses to that?
Correct. My expectation is, of course, to address the Panoni letter, all their outstanding comments, to Andy's point with his letter. And again, it focuses a lot on the crosswalks that candidly, I wanted to make sure the layout was done before I got into that level of detail of the plans. But our resubmission as a final plan would also incorporate all of that, you know, all the crosswalk designs and all, of course, addressing all the review comments. Yes.
So, you would be potentially losing lots, not gaining lots?
Well, under no way would we, unfortunately, no way would we gain lots. I'm confident we won't have to lose lots, but that could be the outcome if we had to keep the pond. Correct.
Just to be clear, Mr. Brower, you wouldn't be reconfiguring lots. You would just be eliminating lots.
Correct. We would just eliminate the lots within 50 feet of the pond surface.
All right. Third time for the question. Where are you with your, with my recommendation on the extension?
Where I am, Mr. Scribner. Your Planning Commission recommended approval. I realize it's a recommending body, but your Planning Commission solicitor is also your board solicitor. And like I said at the very beginning of my presentation, I sent a letter on October 4th, and I said, just so we understand, what the applicant needs to achieve for preliminary plan approval are the following four things. We did it, and we did more. Right now, we are above and beyond where we need to be for purposes of the Township Code for preliminary plan approval. So, it doesn't come down to, it ain't my problem because we can't get an extension. I said, yes, that was an issue, but that notwithstanding, we don't need it. We don't need it. There's no reason we should be extending because we meet the standard under your code for preliminary plan approval. I-
I just want to point out one other thing to the board, if I may. This plan has gone through, I believe, four reviews by Panoni. And we still have a letter with dozens of outstanding comments.
That relate to final plan review?
They don't relate to final plan approval.
Tom, there's seven. There's not dozens.
There's dozens.
There is dozens. I went through it. There's 38.
Yeah, a lot of them say resolved. I'm saying the ones that aren't outstanding is-
I just counted 38, I'm resolved.
Can we, I would like to walk through them one by one.
Wait a minute. There are 12 items under zoning marked outstanding or pending. There are 27 comments under SALDO marked outstanding or pending. There are 26 comments under stormwater management marked outstanding or pending. Now, I will acknowledge that some of them are sort of subcategories of this, of an issue. But there are more than 60 outstanding or pending comments in this letter.
Tom?
And I've said about, all I can say, my, as counsel to the Board of Supervisors, I believe it's foolhardy to approve this plan.
And I just can't get past, I just can't get past the incredible and glaring conflict of interest here. I mean, Mr. Estey-
But you keep saying that. Hold on, hold on. I gotta interrupt you on this.
I will, I will. And I'll clarify.
I need to ask a hypothetical.
No, I will clarify.
I want to talk about conflict of interest.
I don't want to, I'm talking to Mr. Scribner.
I do. I want to talk about conflict of interest.
Here's my issue, Mr. Scribner. Mr. Estey is sitting here advising this board. I wouldn't even say advising the board. I would say actively lobbying against this application when he has taken on behalf of the municipal authority and the Planning Commission what can only be described as an adversarial position. He was, he's very unhappy with our reticence to adopt his suggestion that we, now, this was when he was wearing his municipal authority solicitor hat, provided, we weren't requested. We were, it was made a demand that we provide an easement through our property. Our lot configuration engineered, be damned, to, from Ballinger Road to Reeseville Road, to provide an easement, first it was an easement, and then it evolved into a force main we were to construct. We don't need that for our plan. We're using gravity lines. We were to construct it for another private developer and not to be reimbursed for it. And so, when we resisted that, you know, the tone became increasingly more adversarial. So, that's conflict one. Conflict two is that two weeks ago, Mr. Estey sat where you're sitting right now, Mr. Scribner, and argued, argued with me as though he were an opposing counsel against the Planning Commission recommending this plan. He wasn't sitting there waiting to be consulted. He wasn't waiting for questions to be asked by members of the commission. He was arguing with me and lobbying against this. The Planning Commission recommended approval in any event, which I think speaks volumes about what the tone and the position that Nate Klein would take if he were standing before you right now. They were comfortable. You know the level of respect that your Planning Commission has for Nate Klein. And if he said no, or if he made them feel uncomfortable, I feel confident saying that they would not have voted as they did. So, you know, having been through this process with Mr. Estey in his capacity as representative of two other bodies, and now sitting here and telling him, hearing him say to you, he thinks it would be foolhardy, despite the fact that I've walked the board through its own code in terms of what needs to be provided, despite the fact that I read to the board what Mr. Estey acquiesced to in October, we met it. Plus, we got our zoning approvals. Plus, we got additional resolution from DEP in terms of the sewer planning for the property, which doesn't need to happen at this stage. I find it, I mean, it's beyond, it's beyond mind-boggling to me that I have to sit here and justify this plan to this board when, under the explicit terms of your own code, we have met it. If Nate were here, he would tell you that all of these items, and I'm paraphrasing, and if you have draft minutes, he said, in response to exactly what Mr. Estey is arguing now, that there are too many items, that it's too big, and we've never done it before. He said, well, in all fairness, you go, and I'm paraphrasing, well, in all fairness, some of these things aren't that big of a deal. Like, they sound a lot worse than they are. It's just fine tuning. Can it happen during final land development? Yeah. Is he going to make any representations on our behalf that it will 100%? No, why would he? Why, I wouldn't put myself in that position if I were Nate either. But he did acknowledge that it was our risk, and that worst-case scenario, our layout doesn't change. We lose lots. We eliminate lots. We don't move them around.
All right. So, I think, Tom, you wanted to say something?
I don't want to, I don't appreciate being accused of a conflict of interest, especially when I have knowledge of other things, which I'd be courteous enough not to raise.
It was raised. It was raised as a conditional use.
It wasn't, I didn't raise anything tonight.
I did, though.
What are you talking about, Tom?
But in any event, it's not, the municipal authority did not demand anything. There's a comment in Mr. Boldaz's letter about an easement that the municipal authority needs and the potential for building a line. And nobody said that the applicant is required. We were only in the discussion stages. There was no demand. It's in a review letter. Mr. Heinrich has lots of things in his review letter about roundabouts, about the intersection improvements at Bonsville and Hopewell and Horseshoe Pike. They're not demands. They're just comments in the letter that are relevant to this project. I have no personal animosity against the project. In my view, this is a substantial project in the township that's going to have a substantial impact, and it should not be approved lightly. That's my only, and the board can do whatever it thinks is appropriate.
Agreed. Thank you.
It was not just the review. I'm sorry. If I, if you-
So, I think we spent a lot of time on this today, and I've asked the question, this will be my fifth and final time. Will an extension be awarded if needed before we make a decision on this?
How can I weigh an extension versus the already drafted resolution with conditions if I haven't seen the already drafted resolution with conditions?
You've pretty much turned-
I can't make an informed decision.
The problem is, we have made an informed decision. And before we make it, I would like to give you an option of buying a little bit more time for everybody involved. There are many things to this. I've counted 38. Mr. Estey said more than that items. And I think the paraphrasing is more, what I read was, I don't think I've seen many with this many conditions on this. This is a lot of conditions. So, I'm just asking one last time, and I think the board's going to go ahead and vote on this. Will there be awarded? And I see some hands in the audience, too, so I'll give that up. But I just want to offer this out real quick. Is there an opportunity for an extension on this?
I would have to consult with my client. But, Mr. Scribner, did you just say we have made an informed decision?
I think the board has made their decisions. And I think from what we've heard, I don't think we have to continue to-
I think what you're saying is we're in a position to make a decision.
Right, absolutely.
Not that we've made a decision.
Right, no, no, correct. And then, while you want to discuss this with your client, I'll give the opportunity to the audience, because I saw some hands up there, but-
I want to hear what the audience has to say as well. So, maybe we could take a recess before or after. And during that time, I would also like to see this draft resolution that everybody's seen except for me.
Not everybody has seen it.
That everybody who's relevant to this discussion has seen but me.
All right. So, I guess we'll start with Mr. Rawlings, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium.
Bruce Rawlings, Chairman, Planning Commission. I'll just say, I still stand by my recommendation of preliminary plan approval. After talking to Nate at our meetings and consultants and the Planning Commission members, I feel that it is a good plan and it is ready to go. It has a lot of little details that need to be housekeeping, but most of that can be done at final plan approval. So, I'm just stating that we had a three to two vote. Three with myself, Jim, and Mike Wagner voted yes. And then our other two, Mike Corbin voted no, and I can't remember his name.
Chuck Giordano.
Chuck Giordano voted no. So, I fully support our position as a preliminary plan approval.
Thank you. Thank you, Bruce. Anybody else? All right. I think we'll take a five-minute recess to give Ms. Dunn some time to discuss with her client, and then we'll do an executive session while that occurs, and we'll come back at, say, 20 after now. I think we're going to go back on record now. It's 9:27. 9:26. So-
I'd like to acknowledge that I do have a relationship with Ms. Dunn. She's a counsel for my business. I thought I'd made that announcement before. Obviously, it's not going to affect my vote or how I perceive anything that her work is doing for other clients. It's just, I mean, I'm not actually a big fan of this large neighborhood, but they own the land, and I can't tell them what to do. And they meet ordinances, you know, they meet ordinances. So, that's how I look at things, and that's how I will. So, I just wanted to make that announcement. I believe I had done that during the conditional use. I thought maybe once would be enough, but I guess every time we do this, I'll continue to make it, just so there's, avoids any, anyone whose perceptions that aren't accurate.
You're okay with this, Ms. Dunn?
I'm okay with it.
Okay. All right. So, before we broke for recess, I had asked you for the, if you would discuss with your client for an extension on this. And what say you?
So, am I permitted to see the draft resolution? Because under the MPC, if you approve a plat subject to conditions I don't agree to, then it's a denial anyway. So-
I would say at this point, it may or may not have any bearing on this whatsoever. So, I guess yours is kind of the cart before the horse.
Not really. If you're telling me, Mr. Scribner, that you're going to deny it, if I don't extend-
I've said nothing. I was just asking for an extension.
I know. But then, I mean, then that makes sense to me. Can you give me some sense of where you're heading with this, and so that I don't have to make it a torture deliberation?
I'm going off of the facts that I've had. To be quite honest with you, I haven't even read Mr. Ossie's. So, to answer your question, did that have any bearing? No, because I haven't had five minutes to read it. So-
No, I mean, on my presentation, are you satisfied that I have met the criteria?
I don't want to give up my cards right now, to be honest with you. So, again, I'm just giving you a sense of feeling of where you might want to be with this. If you feel comfortable with it, great. We'll move on, and we'll vote on it. If not, and I just wanted to throw it out there as an option.
Is the board, can the board point to what provision of the code it may feel we haven't satisfied for preliminary review?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I think it's reasonable to infer, Ms. Dunn, that the board is considering denying this plan for non-compliance with the ordinance provisions set forth in the Panoni review letter. And I don't have, that's what I'm inferring.
And, Mr. Estey, are you also relaying to me that it would be your position as the board solicitor, that all outstanding comments in the Panoni review letter relate to preliminary plan approval?
Well, I can't say all of them do. I think there are some where Mr. Klein indicated that they could be deferred to final. I don't view that as meaning that they're not required by preliminary. I really can't sit here and go through a 21-page letter to determine whether they're required by preliminary. All I see is many, many comments that are unresolved that, in my experience, should be resolved before preliminary approval.
But you're offering this board counsel that we haven't, even though you can't go, be troubled to go through it. It's just many, many, many. I mean-
Well, it's obvious.
All right. Mr. Rawlings gave you his take on what Mr. Klein actually said, but I guess that has no meaning. So, you know-
All right. But let her, I just wanted to see if she'll answer. You know, like I said, if you don't want to answer, it's absolutely fine. We'll move on.
If we were to extend for 30 days?
I have no, I'm not even holding you to a time, to be honest with you.
I could extend for 10 days? I mean-
Yeah, but I, it can't, there's-
By the way, Mr. Brower, I don't know, I don't know that we made this point earlier. Mr. Brower can testify to the fact that most of these comments have been addressed at this point in time. Really, the only thing outstanding is the pond, and that's a U.S. Army Corps of Engineer issue. It's not a township issue.
In all fairness, Mr. Brower needs to meet with Mr. Klein and resolve these issues. That's the normal process. And there's just no way that Mr. Klein is going to be able, especially considering the time of the year, to issue another review letter in 10 days. I mean, the normal extension is 90 days. You may not need the 90 days. You may be able to come back here at the-
Normal extension is not 90 days. It's not normal.
Okay, whatever.
All right. Listen, Tom, what we know, what we know is that Mr. Klein, who, I wish to God were here, is not here. And I have a scrap of paper, an email from him, saying that he was comfortable with the board approving the plan as drafted. So, in order for me to make a decision as to whether or not to move forward with the board vote or extend, I need to see that resolution. And I think it's fair that I see- I need to see that resolution, and I think it's fair that I see that resolution.
So, I'll leave it at this. I'm gonna make a recommendation that we do a forty-five-day extension. I'll throw it on the table to you, and if that's acceptable to you, then I think we can move on. I'm not asking for the world here. I'm not asking for months here. I'm asking for a reasonable time to make everybody a hundred percent comfortable with the decision that they're going to make, and I'm giving you guys an opportunity to answer questions that our board, or our solicitor, or our engineers are not comfortable with. I don't think that forty-five days is unreasonable request. If that's something that's suitable to you, great. I would say that would be my suggestion right now. I'd like to hear-
If the board, if applicant were to agree to a forty-five-day extension as suggested by the chairman, would the board be amenable to committing this evening on the record to a waiver in favor of applicant, that we could move forward on a preliminary final track? Because if we comply with everything in this Panone Letter, that's final plan approval status level, and you've made it for one developer in this township this year, so it's not unprecedented. If we can receive a waiver, that we can move forward preliminary final slash final land development approval, then I think that that's a fair compromise.
I disagree with that, to be honest with you, but that's just me.
I mean, I would say to the board, it might be something you could consider once we see what kind of progress is made.
Agreed.
But I don't think you can commit to that tonight.
Again, that was just my, a no blanket forty-five days is my suggestion right now. If you're amenable to that, then I'd throw it to the board for a vote.
I think that if Jim and Bruce both were at the planning commission meeting, and Andy Klein had reviewed it-
Right now, we're working off of other people, and the most important person to discuss this with, in my opinion, is not here, and unfortunately, not available right now. So, that's the only reason why I'm just throwing that out there.
I would try to maybe call him, because most meetings are over.
But, Mr. Scribner, if we don't meet his standards, it doesn't get approved anyway. I mean, we either have to meet everything under preliminary final, or we don't. Nate's not gonna approach a bif, an un-bifurcated process any differently than he would the bifurcated one. We either meet the standards of both preliminary and final plan content under the ordinance or not.
Yeah, but if you can't, I don't want to keep-
I know, but you're back where you are now.
Are you acceptable with the forty-five day?
Are you telling me we can't have a waiver that you gave to somebody else?
I'm telling you, I'm not comfortable with a waiver, but I'm asking you for forty-five-day extension to this, me personally. Again, if you are not acceptable, no problem, we'll make our vote, and we'll move on. I'm just trying to throw out some suggestions right now.
I mean, why do we need more than thirty? This plan already has planning commission-
You're okay with thirty? Wait a minute, the board, what are the board meetings in January, Mr. Pierceall?
January sixth is the reorganization meeting.
And it won't be, it will be-
January-
Seventeen.
Seventeenth is the regular board meeting.
We won't need to go before the planning commission again, because your planning commission already recommended approval.
Correction, sixteen.
Well, forty-five days would take you to February fifteenth. Seems reasonable to me. That way, you'll have two meetings to try to get it resolved.
Yeah, my biggest concern is the holidays, and a lot of business days won't be.
What's the, what's the planning, excuse me, what's the board of supervisors' work session in February?
It'll be the sixth. Morning meeting, that's the sixth.
But that's our reorg.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You're right, you're right. I was looking at January, yep. My calendar, I'm gonna go up to high.
I'm still not understanding. I really don't understand. We have two engineers here that both have said, what are you saying, oh God, for, can I talk?
Yeah.
I mean, are you serious, Tom?
I am.
You're gonna say, oh God, for a supervisor, if I have, I'm speaking?
I did.
You usually speak when you're spoken to.
Uh, no.
Yes, it is. Stop interrupting me. I'm actually having a conversation.
I did not interrupt you.
I'm embarrassed for this applicant that are up here that meet the requirements.
I'm puzzled why you'd want to approve a plan with so many outside-
That it meets our ordinance, Tom.
It doesn't, it does not meet-
Tom, you want, you want to know why?
Gentlemen, 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 gentlemen.
This is my problem. This is why from day one, I've opposed the Carlini plan, because they've received special treatment. And now, guess what, guys? It's biting us in the butt, because now you have an applicant who's meeting it. They receive final, preliminary final, they still don't even have their highway occupancy permit. They still don't have half the approvals they need, but they have final approval. They don't have any, they can't even drop five gallons of treated effluent on their property, because it's gonna end up down the little creek down Bonzo Road. But, we're gonna hold this applicant hands tied for a preliminary when Nate Klein was at the board meeting for planning commission, said he feels comfortable that all of them are minor, and that can be dealt with before the final, and if not, it's on the applicant. It's not on the township. We're not losing anything here. All we're doing is, we're not treating everyone the same. From day one, that was my problem. Joe can't sit here and tell me that they don't meet the requirements of preliminary approval, can you, Joe? You're our engineer. Tom, you're the lawyer. You're law. You're engineer.
Mr. Winters, can I for a second?
Yes.
You guys kind of dodged me here.
No, go ahead.
So, there was a plan that was submitted to our office some time ago, actually back in September, and we requested an easement.
For which, though? Is that for another project?
We requested an easement across their property, so we can get treated effluent from the authority, from the township. Effluent that's treated at the township facility to a future facility-
With a pump station B that can go to Highway Farms to get their thirty-three thousand gallons per day. I understand what you're trying to do. That's a different project. What is that holding them up for, from continuing to try to make the other recommendations?
You asked him to-
I know what he's gonna say. I already knew. I mean-
It's only the-
I read minutes when I'm not there.
Mr. Boldaz, please continue.
I'm sorry, that was your, can you finish?
So, at any rate, so at any rate, we asked for this easement back in September. There was some pushback from the developer. They act, I actually talked to Adam Brower about it. Hey, can you give us this easement? Can you show it on the plans? Well, that went back and forth and back and forth. It never wound up appearing on the plans, and still today in December, when I did the last review, the easement's not there. There are many other comments that were not addressed in my letter-
Like what? Get your letter out and show me. I want to know. You're here right now. Nate's not, you guys are here, let's talk about it.
All right.
That way, we're not doing this in thirty days, or forty-five days, or whenever.
All right.
So, you're in, you're in favor of a vote tonight, correct?
I'm saying I want to hear, they're here, we're here, let's talk about it.
But I'm asking, right now, if we have A or B, we have a vote tonight, or we have a continuance. You're in favor of a vote today? Because a lot of this might be moot right now.
I'd like to know from my personal knowledge, anyway, but-
Okay, but a vote tonight, or?
I honestly, I think that, I don't see anything wrong with a thirty or forty-five day with a preliminary final. They can meet the, if they can meet the ordinances and do it, kill two birds with one stone, so be it.
Yeah.
If they can't, then that's on them. That's not on us. And I'm here to say, does it meet our ordinance, or does it not meet ordinance? That's, you know, that's kind of what I thought.
And because this is, I'm sorry, but because this is a public meeting, Mr. Boldaz, I hope nobody interpreted what I said to mean that you were the one who demanded the easement. I was referring to Mr. Corbin, and I was referring to a municipal authority meeting. So, if you requested one in your letter-
I don't think any personally, I don't know what preliminary-
It's not what I was talking about.
I don't know what preliminary-
I understand.
-plan approval needs. I am a sewer engineer.
I know.
I build treatment plants and pump stations, and I help municipal clients try and manage their infrastructure. That's what this comment about the easement is.
Yeah.
It does have nothing to do with your development. It has to do with the future of this township, and being able to treat effluent in this township for whoever comes here, and be able to dispose of it properly. We don't have a stream that we can discharge. We asked for a simple easement across the property in September. It got ignored on two other revisions. There's another comment in here that suggests that they should remove the sewer line from one of the bio-retention basins, which seems to be a major issue in Mr. Klein's letter.
Are you, are you talking about sewage or storm?
Sewer, stormwater. I'm talking about a sewer line that goes through a stormwater basin, doesn't have enough cover over top of it. We suggested it be removed from the basin, and they might have to lose a home. That, to me, is a major issue, because it results in a loss of money and profit for the client, but nobody addressed that. I've been doing this for a number of years, and I got to tell you, there's been little progress on this thing since the first time I saw it. They, I don't, I think there was maybe one response letter, but the other ones, I didn't get response letters to my comments.
But, Mr. Boldaz, that is-
So, I don't know what, just let me finish. I don't know what preliminary plans have to have on them. I'm not saying that I know that. I don't know what final plans have to have on them.
That's what we're paying for.
Alls I know is that my job as the municipal authorities engineer is try and take care of the sewer infrastructure. That's all I have to say.
Is the other side of the street, is that on our capital, is that on our 537 plan right now?
What's that?
Wherever you're trying to get the easement to would be-
Is it on our 537 plan?
East? Is that on our, at the time of the application, the conditional use, was that, is our Act 537 plan? Does that, our capacity management plan, does that include the other project, the planks?
Doesn't yet, because they're on front of us.
Doesn't yet, so what do we, I don't understand.
But I'm looking out for the future.
But, what, how is that stopping someone from doing what they're entitled to do?
I'm not stopping anybody. I asked for an easement across the property. They, all they have to do is draw lines on the draw, on the document. We didn't ask them to put a pipe in the ground. I suggested they put a pipe in the ground. Nobody asked them to put a pipe in the ground. Alls they have to do is draw an easement across-
Let's say that in our own ordinance, though, when it's some section three fifty-
I don't know, I'm not here to argue about the preliminary plan. That's not my job.
I can make this incredibly, we're open to giving an easement. We're, it became objectionable.
Tell us that.
We did. Mr. Ferrer spoke, Mr. Ferrer spoke to you before, and he did say, we were not objecting to the easement. But, the problem was, very quickly, the easement became not just an easement, it became a force main that we don't need, that you admitted during our meeting was going to benefit another private developer, but we were going to be paying for it. That made zero sense.
That was a suggestion, because you couldn't meet the first requirement of providing storage capacity.
Well, we can meet it. I have the letter, I have the letter of intent from Applecross-
How are you gonna get it there?
What do you mean?
How are you gonna get that effluent over there?
Well, the effluent is leaving the treatment facility.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not an engineer, but we're not sending treated effluent there on a regular basis. This is not, we are not sending it there. It is a backup storage requirement in, in the event of an emergency. It's a three-day storage requirement. As a matter of fact, Mr. Boldaz-
Is that dated?
To Applecross?
Yeah.
It is.
So, what, so what happens if Applecross is no longer? The golf course closes? What, how, what?
Then it's, it's the obligation of whoever the successor and title is. But, I would like to, I would like to point out that, see, this is the issue I have with the municipal authority representatives and solicitor having their fingers in this now, when we're before this board. Back in December, December eleventh of two thousand eighteen, so almost exactly a year ago, the municipal authority met, and we had just filed our preliminary plan at that point in time. So, keep that in mind, please, Mr. Scribner, when you're asking me for another forty-five days, it's been over a year. Now, the Weaver tract comes up, and Mr. Boldaz, the minutes from this meeting say, Hydratera is currently reviewing the land development plans prepared by E.B. Walsh, and the planning module received from Ebert Engineering. Mr. Boldaz discussed the subject of lagoon storage for the Weaver tract, and explained that the original design for the Applecross lagoons considered storage for the Applecross and Weaver tracts in the wettest year predicted in the study. Development of the Weaver tract didn't materialize as expected, and then the Mapleview project was submitted ahead of them. The Applecross spray system requires three months of storage, which is approximately seventeen million gallons, to allow for spray to be discontinued during the winter months when the ground is frozen. Three days' worth of storage capacity for the Mapleview and Weaver tracts is equivalent to less than three hundred thousand gallons a day, or less than one and one-half percent of the storage required for the spray irrigation system. Therefore, Mr. Boldaz opined that additional storage capacity for the Weaver tract would not be needed, and cited maintenance issues for the authority with having unused underground tanks, or the additional infrastructure required for lagoons. He noted that the planning module for the Mapleview project allowed them to discharge without providing storage capacity, and DEP was satisfied with the concept of using stream discharge and the fifty percent backup area in lieu of storage capacity. He felt that any additional storage requirement would need to be located on the Applecross site, which would be problematic unless permission was granted to raise the berms around the lagoons. Mr. Summers and Ms. Moser expressed their preference for lagoon storage versus tanks, and Mrs. Moser was wary of setting a precedent by allowing stream discharge. Now, we go from a glowing endorsement of our storage requirement being at the lagoons a year ago, to now being questioned how it's possible, when he explained to the own, his own body that he is meant to consult to why it made sense, that that's how it was originally planned for, and now you're seeing a year later, when the municipal authority didn't get everything it demanded, a one-eighty. And you're telling me that this has been processed in good faith by, you know, the members of the municipal authority? That is my conflict of interest issue with Mr. Estes sitting up there tonight and telling you, quite frankly, Mr. Scribner, not good legal counsel in terms of what is required under this preliminary plan process. So, if you're inclined to, if you're inclined to not permit us the opportunity to proceed with preliminary slash final in forty-five days, and you're telling me it's a bad idea to proceed to a vote tonight, then, I mean, you have us over a barrel.
I'm simply asking for an extension.
But I've never seen so much conflict of interest and so much bad faith.
I'll be honest, I've seen a lot of conflict of interest, and I've seen a lot of conditions, and I've seen a lot of outstanding conditions. So, all right, so, we'll put it to bed. If you're accepting of, what did we say that was February?
I believe it was fifteenth.
Yeah, February fifteenth. Forty-five days would take you to February fifteenth, because we have an extension until December thirty-first right now.
If they'll, would, do you act on plan to the work session? Can it be the first one?
Yeah.
Well, we would make it. We have plenty of time to put it on the agenda, so it's not a-
We will grant the township an extension through February sixth, and that will be the last extension. And at that point, it just, it, it's already reached a different point, quite frankly. This is not-
All right, so the February sixth is what? Is that our-
Thursday.
Is that our, that's our morning session?
I'll make a motion that we accept the request for an extension till February sixth, conditioned on having that extension request put in writing and received no later than December twenty-seventh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would renew my request before this-
You have to vote. I don't agree that they-
But you can say nay, but you have to vote.
Okay. I mean, I'm just gonna say nay. I think that they-
I just want, you do have to vote, buddy.
Okay, I'm just saying, I think that they-
Can I renew my request for a copy of the resolution that was referenced in Nate's email?
Well, it doesn't-
That's the only way that Nate weighed in this evening. I'm sorry, am I going to receive one?
No.
And why? Why not?
Because the board didn't take action on the resolution.
It's part of the record.
It's not part of the record. They didn't take action, and you gave us-
You used it to convey-
You gave us an extension until February sixth, and the board will make a decision on by February sixth unless we get another extension.
You used Nate's words from this email to convey to the board what his position was.
I said, I'm not giving it to you.
All right, so we do have another resol, we do have another resolution to get to tonight.
File a right to know request.
So, we have ordinance and resolution for consideration, Resolution twelve of two thousand nineteen, a resolution approving Lisa Velatus to act as a right-to-know officer for, for East Brandywine Township, the East Brandywine Township Municipal Authority, and East Brandywine Fire Company. I'll turn that over to Luke.
Yes, perhaps timely. We have two resolutions we maintain that document the township's intent to comply with the right-to-know law. The first is a resolution that describes the titles of officials generically, and describes a fee schedule and a response schedule. The second, or two separate sets of resolutions that either name the police department or the township administration's right-to-know officer. What's in front of you is a resolution that would name Lisa, our new township secretary, as the right-to-know officer for, as you read off, the municipal authority, fire company, and township. I would retain my title as assistant right-to-know officer.
Make a motion, we add-